... commission me nor sir for we have a form percentage you want to prove them in.
I move.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aight.
We may have some more.
We have the other one?
There's one.
So I don't know if she moved, but I think she got her. So I don't, maybe she doesn't have a box.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you can put another one. I mean. You know, that's, I don't know what it's doing on the. When it comes to prevailing ourselves sometimes, or the facts of it, or maybe you should get a different feel, you know, I don't know, whatever just placed off this study.
And they don't know they're all. Of Tanny McClain Crocker.
From Crocker? So one from Crocker resigned, they got another one from Crocker. One from Crocker going out, one from Crocker going back in.
I'll move.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aight.
Tax at nine thirty, right?
Yes.
Is there time for the bunker here?
Yeah.
Well, like you said, so. You have something to say? No. And you're taking your same RPC right? They have a deer hunting accident from the county over there.
Not a one.
South seventeen was busy still, boy, they piled in there.
Sound like world war.
I saw your video. Pretty.
Oh, that was, you ought to see that video right now. So you sent me a picture of my blind down there.
Uh huh.
The cow just made a gage out of it. One cow is inside of my blind, the other one's right behind it getting ready to go through. They destroyed it.
That's showing you much respect, aren't they?
I've been after this, I called Blackie this one year, he did, they say Blackie come to visit, it shows that Blackie is inside of my blind. I mean, he's in it, he tore the whole front of it off.
Richard take that picture?
No, I don't know who took the picture, but they sent it.
Those cows would need more checking.
Yes. I was like, are you kidding me?
Sounds like Bambi and the cow are friends.
Said Richard probably put a salt block in there.
So she, I called her and talked to her, she said she was fine with that, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Jess.
Oh, Carol. I'm online, it's eight seven five.
Yeah, they're winning their dollar blind.
They're doing a good job.
I gotta stay in every ground blind, I got three of them set up out there, depending which way the wind and ball where I go.
They're putting some covers in.
I'm taking pictures of the other blind I had there, it's on the ground too.
Yeah.
They just hooked it.
Yeah.
They got it knocked down and then they just busted all the way, this time they went through it.
Yeah.
They ain't knocking it down, they couldn't knock it down, so they just walked right through it. There's all these places to walk around it, but no, they had to go right through it.
I've been just collecting scrap lumber, I built two of them, little eight by eight.
That's what we got out there.
Box blinds. I might elevate one of them, but I built that one so heavy I'd have to have a thing.
We did six by sixes.
Crane come said it when we got it.
We put six, we took the big, carry the big tractor with the forklifts.
Mm hmm.
We raised them up and we put the six by sixes on them. And we've got six of them out there, they're eight by eights with the roofs and office chairs in it, big six by sixes, and then at the very bottom they tied them together with railroad ties.
Yeah.
Kind of like skids where you could move it if you ever wanted to move them.
Yeah.
We got them set up all over. There's a bunch of them, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them out there. But. One of the guys, he got up in that number two stand, he was new out there hunting. I said, he'll see.
Oh geez.
I seen him drive by, I was already in my blind. Just barely starting to get daylight, they go driving by up there, they saw the ways to go to get there, six thirty air, boom! I go, was he walking to the stand when he shot it, or did he make it to the stand? Still early. He said, oh, he just got up in the stand, got his belt up, got sent in a chair there, was moving his stuff around, he goes, I thought someone was walking through the woods. He goes, it was a nice day, he walked right down the hood, walked up, walked up and heard that wall too, just looked at it. He goes, I got my scope, all it seemed was brown, so I just put it in a certain area and pulled the trigger, I didn't have time to move my scope. Widen it out. He just dropped right there, I went down, I followed him and pulled him up out of the creek and up, up the big hill.
Where'd he go, you man?
Shot him right in the shoulder, right up through there, that bullet, the lead never exited the deer, it blowed the whole shoulder out, I'm through.
Wow.
The upper part of the spine.
How did he use it?
Huh?
How did he use it?
Thirty out of six. It was an eight pointer, it was, I like that. Pretty little deer. There's all the little bucks out there, but I mean, it was nice, pretty, nice looking deer.
Goodie.
Here, I took a picture of it, I got on the ground, not when he flipped it up, it doesn't look as big on the ground. Here it is. A good size, sure a good size, yeah.
Yeah.
Could walk right through it. I mean, it was a typical. Perfect. I let a nighting go by like that last year. I'm just looking for something bigger than I got. Who cares, the ones I was shooting, that one way bigger than what I got. Takes us a little far away. Couple hundred yards out of the range, that's what that was. About by three hundred, I could've hit him.
Yeah. Yeah.
Bucking back in Booneville, shot that one this weekend.
Yeah, you see the one, you know Dr. Copley?
I guess.
Pete Close Copley, he got a property up the Iowa line.
Yeah.
Leaving food plot and feeding. He finally got.
I didn't.
He got all those big deer, each deer's got a different name to it.
Yeah. Never hunted before. Oh, yeah, you did. Yeah, that's a good one.
Look at all those northern deer. What looked best to me was this picture here. In the back side of that deer.
That's a good one, too. Good.
Yeah.
You knew what it was, that. It's cute. One of them both ends. Yeah.
Built my last buck.
Little fighting there, that's some city deer.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Like that, they kill.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get deer killed this morning, I'm running over.
Yeah. Yeah. All the time. Yeah. Sim city deer, like. Yeah. Lot loads. Go back in behind there.
You decided what meetings you're going to? You decided what meetings you're going to?
Not really. I see some good ones in there.
Yeah, I wanna go to that one with the alphabet suit.
Alphabet suit, they're not serving suit, I'll tell you right now.
It says everything you need to know about tips, easy, easy and edge.
Yeah. Right.
Tuesday morning, we're gonna give that ARPA update.
Yeah, I seen. I'm trying to be negative, but look, I've got the overall going. Nothing too spectacular on me, if anybody knows who we still.
Everybody's afraid, a lot of them are doing it. Really, a lot of them, but they're different between, the cities come from the state, and they got a little different leeway, we get, the money that comes to the feds to the counties is totally different than the money that comes to the cities from the state. They follow their, pretty much different rules.
They're gonna say they, they're pretty flexible on what they can do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so. I was told we're gonna get some flexibility.
Our problem is, the county money is totally different than, ARPA money's totally different than the ARPA money the cities get, because they're allowed to use it for more than we are.
I'm planning on finding out.
Right now.
Find them more.
It may change. But that isn't right now.
I wanna find out about that stuff, too.
But they can do, we can't.
I'm planning on going to that one for sure.
But they sure know a lot about elections in this one, don't they?
They do. Elections. Which day were you been in there before, what they talk about, what all will they talk about today? Is it more the running of the elections, what do you talk about, how you need to campaign, like, rules of campaign?
It's more on your side. And conducting the election.
What conference is that?
It's a MAC conference, Missouri Association of Counties, it comes up, uh, next week, we won't have a meeting Monday, we'll be gone Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, till MAC conference.
And you won't have one Thursday?
You won't look like I'm. Oh, I'll go down and check and I'll call you back today.
Preston Kramer, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to see if I remember the face correctly.
That was for me.
See what they've done with them.
Wish they had a little more in depth of what they were gonna cover on some of these deals. Stay with this name.
Yeah, I'm looking for a conversation. We're in a short time, we're on this one.
Yeah.
Least they're different this year, they've been pretty much the same the last five years.
Yeah.
How you doing? Good. You keeping it busy?
They are.
I don't like it, you two know.
I don't believe I've met him.
I attended this virtually last year, so it's been a couple of years since I've been over here.
I'm Clint Jared, I'm the Western District Commissioner now, so.
Charles Bassett, Eastern District Commissioner, had a little January this year.
Okay.
You covered, how many counties, Sam?
Eight.
All of Iraq?
Mm hmm.
Yeah. You came, did you come from Willow Springs, is that where you come from originally?
Uh, no, um, I've actually been in a, a couple of different places, uh, I've worked for MODOT for twenty years, I started working in the construction office up in Kirksville. Uh, then I had a couple of different positions in Macon, and then I came down here in, uh, July of eleven.
Remember when you come down here, but I couldn't remember if you come from the south or the north, I couldn't remember.
Where you work out of now?
Uh, my office is in St. James, uh, which is just about dense enough, the eight counties that I'm over, but the, uh, uh, the reality is I spend most of my time behind the windshield of the car.
Yeah.
And eight counties, pretty big geographic area, so.
Yeah.
Oh, look, she's got a bag, a bucket of them.
She got a bucket of golly?
What?
What, she got a bucket of?
Them tinsel pops.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. They were hidden for a while.
It's my favorite, you can't find them anywhere.
The tinsel old pops, the old suckers with the tinsel roll in the middle of it, remember the old house, how many lives gonna get you?
There's your L right there. There's your L. Big three. Anything exciting, press thing coming up? Pressed, pressed anything, anything coming up, any? Anything coming down the pipe that you know of?
Oh, nothing exciting yet, but it's, you know, was it just, I guess today, the president's gonna sign the infrastructure bill, and it looks like, uh, our folks are digging into it to see, because there's a lot of things in that bill that aren't road and bridge, but there is a lot of road and bridge stuff in there. And it looks like the investment road and bridge is probably about twenty percent what it was for the previous bill on an annual basis. And then, of course, the state gas tax got passed, um, so that's gonna be phased in over the next five years, so at the state and federal level, there's gonna be more revenue coming in, so a lot of those projects that have been kinda setting on the shelf for the last twenty years, some of them will get to move forward.
Just gotta figure out how we get ours to finish the line, make it forward.
I asked, I asked a couple of my other federal elected friends if it was in the counties, and I said it's doctor was, they weren't sure.
Well, the, uh, there's two things, so on the, on the state side, um, the way the state gas tax is set up, seventy percent of that goes to, to MODOT, and thirty percent of that goes to cities and counties, fifteen percent respectively, so as the state gas tax, as it, it went up two and a half cents a couple of months ago, and as next year, we're in another two and a half cents and so forth and so on, um, the Department of Revenue, you know, they collect that money and they distribute it to the state and cities and counties, so you're gonna see your card funds creeping up over the next five years. And on the federal side, um, there are, there were two programs in the previous federal bill that went specifically to, to counties and cities. Uh, that was the Transportation Alternatives Program, which Waynesville has used quite a bit over the years, and St. Robert, uh, on several sidewalk projects, and then, of course, the program you're probably most familiar with is the BRO program, which is the bridge program. Um, it is my understanding that both of those programs, or something that does the same function, is included in the new bill, but that's information that we'll be able to dig through, it's a huge bill, you know, so, we're digging through it and we're trying to figure out exactly what it means for roads and bridges here in Missouri, but it is my understanding that those two programs, uh, or something similar are in the new bill. I don't know, um, I hope to find out, um, I don't know if the, the county bridge program is funded at the same level, or less, or more, and that's information that we'll find out when we dig into it some more. I hope it's more, but.
How are you, Gary, how are you doing?
What happened to you?
Hey, how are you?
I'm gonna see you virtual.
Yes, yeah. Did you have a lady? Yeah, yeah, I'll get you one, I need. Do you have a hot board? Yep.
You ready to do? You ready? Ready to go?
Uh, do you guys want something?
Where are we?
Where are you, come on up, looks like you got a lot of stuff for you, what you're doing. You're gonna need a table.
Hey, well, thanks for having us, this is, um, our annual transportation update meeting, so we take a look at, um, the projects that needs here in the county, so what we wanna do is go through the list, uh, we'll take off anything that's either been completed or not in need, and then we'll add anything else on, any needs on the state system that, uh, we need to add. Uh, when we leave today, we want to take away the top three or four priorities in Pulaski County, and up at the top, you'll see that, um, underneath the heading, the revised eleven nineteen twenty twenty priorities, those are what you guys had chosen last year, you're certainly welcome to keep those if they're still relevant, or you can select new ones, just however the case may be. Um, we also wanna talk about multimodal, because that's, uh, we are being asked by MODOT to provide some information on multimodal projects, and kind of what the priorities are net, and the region R as well, um, you'll notice that we're, we'll kinda go by the number, uh, of the project, that just really means the order that it came on the list, and you'll see holes, because that means that we've had projects that have been completed or taken off. Uh, on the third column over, the STIF FYI, FY, um, if there's a number there, that means that it's in the STIF, and so that's an obligation by MODOT to complete that project or a portion of that project, um, and so you can talk about, you know, if that, we don't want you selecting those as a priority, it may be that there may be another piece of that, or something that's not included that you wanna add, but if it's got a number in that column, then, um, that basically means there's gonna be some work happen on that, in that this little year. We'll take, let Preston take it from there.
Bonnie, you might have to explain this.
Yes, go ahead.
So, hi, I'm Anne Friend, I'm the Planning Manager with MRPC, um, so these lists are what I sent out earlier in the year when we were talking about tier three needs, we'll go through this separately at the end, um, the first ones that have numbers next to it are actually in this larger list, the ones below are in our regional transportation plan and our other, um, multimodal, whether that's rails, trains. The ones below, we're in our regional transportation plan and our other, um, multimodal, whether that's rails, trails, sidewalks, anything related to multimodal that's not road and bridge. Um, are also, um, some items that were identified in the past, they may not be relevant anymore. So, if there is anything that's not relevant anymore to your multimodal needs, let us know, and we can take it off the list. And at the very bottom, there were some aviation needs identified, um, with regard to the airport in Pulaski County. So, this is a separate list, some of which are on this larger transportation needs list. Um, but all of these aren't necessarily on the state system. This list can be, um, a little more inclusive of the county. Again, this list, the larger list, is specific to items on the state system. So, that is why we have a separate sheet this year.
There's a couple of things I want to mention, uh, because I think we've got some folks in the room that maybe have not participated in this exercise before. We love our acronyms, that third column over is the STIP, the Statewide Transportation Improvement Program. Uh, that is a rolling five-year program that our commission approves every July. And if you can go out to our website and you take a look at the STIP, there's actually an interactive map where you can zoom in on Pulaski County, you can see the projects that are, that are coming up, uh, for the next five years. And generally, what they do is, every year when they meet, they approve a STIP. It's based on, uh, projections of what we expect revenue to be coming in over the next couple of years. So, sometimes projects have to move, move out of fiscal year, or sometimes we have to accelerate them, uh, move them up a fiscal year. If revenue coming in is higher than projected. But regardless, once there is a number, or once a project is in the STIP, it's an obligation to the public, it will be constructed. If it has to move out a year or two, um, that's rare, two years, we did see that. This last year, with the revenue shortfall due to the pandemic, there were projects that got, had to move out a year, and in some cases, two years. But, uh, revenue is back up, and as we discussed earlier, the, the federal bill being signed today, and, uh, the increase in the state gas tax. I expect more, uh, I expect to see more projects populated and brought into the STIP. And where this list come, comes from, is these are unfunded transportation needs that have been identified by some folks in this room, and your predecessors. Elected officials, uh, at the county level, as well as all of the cities here in, in Pulaski County. And sometimes a customer will raise a concern, uh, but, but generally speaking, the items on this list came from elected officials in, in Pulaski County. And then, we'll go through the list, identify if there's any new needs. There's a couple on here that, uh, we need to talk about possibly removing. And then, of course, in December, uh, all eight counties come together and, and talk about what's the most important, uh, regional priorities. And then, MRPC sends them along to MODOT, and we, if we have room in the STIP, we try and get some of those top priorities of the region included in the next, uh, five-year STIP. I'll start going down through the list, um, and, and with my recommendations or comments thereof. PU 700, uh, Safety Improvements to Route 17 from 44 to the Texas line. I recommend leaving that on the list. PU 703, uh, the Route 28 Bridge, uh, BNSF Bridge specifically, over Route 28, I recommend leaving that on the list. PU 704, I did want to discuss a little bit. So, that was added years ago, uh, and it used to say, safety concerns on Route U. And we added some Chevrons out there past Tavern Creek, and last year, we finished the two-foot shoulder widening. Allergies are killing me this morning. So, we did the circle, the shoulder widening in the rubble strips last year. And I recommended removing it from the list last year, but, uh, this group had some concerns about the grading beyond the shoulder line. Uh, our maintenance guys have taken care of some of that, and, and intend to take care of the rest of it over time, as they have, as they have time to do that. That's really more of a maintenance issue than, uh, construction. We would bring our contractor in to take care of that grading. And I, I looked at the accident history, and the purpose of that shoulder widening was because there was a history of runoff-the-road accidents on Route U. According to the Highway Patrol database, that appears to have went away. So, the purpose of the project was to reduce runoff-the-road accidents, which it, it would appear, after one year, that it has done that. So, is, are you still concerned about the grading, or could we remove that from the list?
I don't see.
I haven't heard anything.
No. A lot of, you, you've taken care of a lot of things, some of it was just the little arrow signs on curves, you got that taken care of. You did pretty much everything y'all said you was going to do to 17. And, and what you're talking about is a maintenance issue, it's not, it's something they take care of yearly when they go down through there. It's up to these guys.
I haven't heard anything, I don't know what the client has or not.
I mean, last summer, they did, they bulked that project, and, you know, we traveled quite a bit, and it has made it considerably better, you know? And I think that was the big issue with it, is there were so many washout spots on U that as soon as they dropped a wheel off, there was nowhere to go. But, I mean, now they've, they've, they fixed that issue. Just the maintenance on it, I think, would be, be the big thing, so.
So, we'll take that one off.
And the next one is good news. So, PU 705, uh, is Route Y, uh, the entire length. We will be doing shoulder widening in rumbles on Route Y in fiscal year '24, that is a funded project. And that has been a project that's been on this list for a number of years. So, I'm glad.
It is.
A lot of Rex.
Yes, there is.
So, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to bring that into the STIP. We will also be doing that to Route O.
Oh, okay.
Because I know a lot of folks use O.
Yep, O to Y, yep.
So, um, in '24, and I know O wasn't on this list for, for safety improvements, but it made sense to do both of them.
Right.
Uh, so that is a funded project in fiscal year '24. And, and we've been leaving them on this list, uh, until the project.
Does that list go on here?
Yeah, it's right there. PU 705.
And that says.
The third column over has '24, that means.
It says Y, but you say you're going to add O to it.
Yeah, O's not on the list.
O wasn't on this list, but we're, it made sense to do O as well.
Okay.
So, that is a funded project, so you do not need to consider it as one of your priorities. And hopefully, in a few years, when we physically have completed the project, we will remove it from this list. Uh, PU 707, improvements to I-44 across the county, uh, I recommend leaving that on the list. PU 708, Safety Improvements to Route T, I recommend leaving that on the list.
Will they include, uh, shoulder widening as well, or?
Well, T makes a good candidate for shoulder widening.
Especially past the bridge.
And, uh, any, any roadway where we see, um, a higher-than-average number of runoff-the-road accidents, make a good candidate for shoulder widening. And on, on Route T, kind of like Route U, the right-of-way is really narrow.
Yeah.
But we feel like we probably could do a two-foot shoulder on Route T. But I like, I like listing the need as safety improvements.
Okay.
Because that includes things like Chevrons and, and other things as well. So, so, when we're, we're able to bring that project in, we'll take a look at the types of accidents that are happening along it, and, and then do what we feel needs to be done to address those types of accidents. So, I definitely recommend leaving it on the list. Route Z, I recommend for, it's smoother surface, that is.
Absolutely.
I recommend leaving that on the list.
Absolutely.
Uh, Route, uh, PU 711, I did want to discuss. So, Route PP, um, there for a number of years, had a higher-than-average number of accidents, that appears to have dropped off. Has something changed out of Route 11 P?
There were, all the complaints I'm getting off of PP is just the surface. And it's so narrow. Yes. And, and there's a very large campground at the end, or two large campgrounds. Very large campground. And we're getting a tremendous amount of motorhome and large RV traffic on that, and they're having trouble negotiating that.
Okay, let's, let's leave it on the list.
A lot of it's road, just road service. Yeah, road service. But it, if it could be widened or anything, it could be helped, or that would be tremendous.
Leave it on the list.
Because of those two campgrounds.
You said there's two campgrounds?
Yeah.